I'm going to call this county council meeting for order. Dr. Brent Blackwell has entered.
Vacation and pledge of allegiance.
Will you join me and bow your heads as I say the prayer? Dear wise and loving Father, first let me say thank you on behalf of all who are gathered here today. Thank you for your many and abundant blessings. Thank you for the measure of health we need to perform our duties. Thank you for the ability to be involved in useful work and for the honor of bearing appropriate responsibilities. You have said in Scripture, "Citizens ought to obey the governing authorities to promote peace, order, and justice." Therefore, I pray for this council and the various levels of county officials. I ask you grant us wisdom to govern and a sense of welfare and true needs of our citizens, a keen thirst for justice and rightness, confidence in what is good and proper, the ability to work together in harmony. Please give us the assurance of what will benefit the citizens of York County in your blessed name, I pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For oath of office, we would ask you to please come down so you can be sworn in by Mr. Kendry. Tamara Osborne, Annie Williams, Barbara O'Connell, John Comans, Patricia Mickel, Joe Coggins. Rich Fletcher, now to provide us an update on the activities of the I-77 Alliance.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of county council. Thank you very much for the opportunity to be here with you tonight. Again, my name is Rich Fletcher. I'm here to represent the South Carolina I-77 Alliance. And just want to take a few minutes to give you an update on our activities. I know at least three of you have served on our board in the past or currently, and thank you for your service. Hopefully for those three of you, this will be more of a refresher. For the other members of council, hopefully this will give you a little bit better update on who we are and what we do. See if I can turn this on first. Well, technical difficulties. Yeah. It's on, but it's not working, so... Sorry, maybe... Well, I mean, I guess I will talk and we can just get the... Oh, there we go. Slides magically... Thank you very much. I'll just give you the sign. How about that? Technology at its finest. Thanks. So just to give you a quick update, we are a very laser-focused organization. We are a marketing and lead generation organization for the five counties along I-77, York, Chester, Fairfield, Richland, and Lancaster counties. We... Our job is really to market and brand that region and generate as many economic development leads we can for the five-member counties. There are three main points I really want to leave you with tonight about who we are. Again, I mentioned the lead generation and marketing. We're very mission-focused on that, and that is all we do. We do not get into project management. We do not deal with existing industries, nor do we do product development. We allow the five county economic development offices to do that. We focus on those high-value-added functions of lead generation and marketing. We are very fiscally accountable and responsible. So for instance, over 60% of our budget in all five years of our existence have been focused on economic development marketing activities. Less than 40% of our budget actually goes to operations and management. So we're really spending our money on those lead generation efforts. We're also a county-driven, ground-up organization. The organization was actually created by the three counties of York, Chester, and Fairfield. The county economic developers decided there was a void in the marketplace, and they needed help in marketing and creating leads for their economic development efforts. Created our organization and then joined in with Richland and Lancaster to kind of create that five-county organization. Those five county economic development directors are all on our Board of Directors and are also on our executive committee. So we are very responsive to the needs of the five county economic development directors. Just to give you a quick overview, we're unique in that we actually represent the two metro areas of both Columbia and Charlotte. So we talk about that 3.5 million-person metro area combination, and the labor sheds are about 1.2 million in both the north and the south. Clearly, the Charlotte metro area and York County are driving a lot of the activity for us, but we focus a lot on that growing population in the Charlotte metro as well as the Columbia metro. I mentioned our lead generation, but one of the things we really want to do for our five counties is provide them a level of services that they cannot provide on their own. We pool our resources and are able to give back to our counties a lot of resources that they do not have the budgets for. So one thing I want to highlight here on this slide is our GIS web tech technology that we've put onto our website as well as each of the five county websites. So this allows York County to highlight the different properties that they market every day, but also brings in a layer of GIS technology to help them understand or show their prospects, workforce, skill level, commuting patterns, all in one site so that their clients can see not just the real estate opportunities here in York County, but all the demographic and labor data that they need in one place. This costs us in the tens of thousands of dollars on an annual basis in something that York County could not provide for itself. So this allows us to give that back to the county as well as the other four county partners. Some of the other things we do, we create marketing videos for each of the communities. We do a labor study. We've done that two years, the past two years, to allow them to also have better data about the labor force. We also pay for their sales force customer relationship management for each of the five counties. So this is a way that we're giving back to the counties, allowing us to pool our resources and provide them value-added services that are actually more valuable than the amount that they actually pay to us and dues every single year. So at the end of the day, it's really about what have we done? What are our metrics? So I've got some charts here that are talking about our six key metrics that we track on a monthly basis in our sales and marketing efforts. You can see the blue trend line shows you our results for last fiscal year that ended June 30th, and we also have the first quarter numbers for this fiscal year. Our goal is to do over 24 marketing activities every year, calling on over 150 companies. And you can see last year, we beat both of those metrics. We've also are on track to do that this year. I'm happy to report we have met those metrics every year in our five years of existence. Next, we talk about site consultant visits and requests for information. Those are... The site consultants are those folks that are helping many of our clients locate their facilities in South Carolina and other areas of the country. So we want to make sure we have a strong impact with those consultants and make them sure they understand the business quality as well as the advantages of doing business here in the I-77 corridor. So we have met those goals for each of the last five years as well. And you can see our request for information is another value-added service we provide back to each of the counties. And I think this might be about the last thing I want to leave you with. At the end of the day, it's about the leads that we've generated for the counties. So you can see last year, we presented 19 qualified leads to each of the five-member counties, which is in excess of our goal. And we've also given them 14 additional opportunities through the Department of Commerce's efforts that they might not otherwise have received. So in total, last year, we had 33 leads that we passed over to the five-member counties. And our goal actually this year is to increase that to, just off the top of my head, is to go to 35 leads to generate for this year. So again, it's about providing those leads back to the county as well as increasing that effort from one year to the next to make sure that our value continues to increase for each of the five counties. And that's really all I have for you, but I'd certainly be willing to take any questions if anyone has any. But again, just wanted to give you that update. Thank you for your continued support and for your service on our board.
Any questions? Thank you, Rich.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Next up, Rock Hill City Manager David Vehan to provide information on the Knowledge Park TIF.
Good evening, Chairman Johnson and members of the council. Appreciate the opportunity to be with you tonight. I'm going to get up here as quick as I can because I keep things moving. I know y'all... I know where you sit. The... I had the opportunity to speak before Councilmember Winkler's Committee Economic Development several weeks ago. He invited me to come and speak tonight, which I certainly appreciate the opportunity. I've had the opportunity to speak with some of you about the things we have here tonight, but not in great detail. So I've got about 100 slides. I've narrowed down to about 20. So I know you would appreciate that as well. David, I'm not sure how to click here, so... Okay, good. Well, go ahead and hit it, and we'll go through. The thing that's driving most of the development that we have in our community right now are the opportunity zones. When these were designated under the... Several years ago, most of Knowledge Park and then down Saluda Street is where most of the development opportunities exist in Rock Hill. And they really are. And the thing that's moving this so quickly is that most of these opportunity funds have to be funded by the end of December, and they have to be underway within the first six months of next year in order to catch a 5% or they lose a 5% opportunity in year seven from a federal tax law. So it's a bit of a geeky kind of thing, but they're just... To let you know, the folks are moving very quickly, and they're moving in front of us very quickly, trying to move several development projects going. You can go ahead. This shows you the two existing TIFs that are in the downtown area. This originally started as a single TIF, and through a series of agreements with the county, between the county and the schools, we have what you have today, the blue being the textile corridor and then the red being the downtown tax increment industry. In roughly... Winter's at the top of the screen. Downtown's at the bottom of the screen. Everything you see with a color on it is a place that we have a potential development opportunity right now. Go ahead. Let me just quickly run through those. We've... These are the things that have already... That already have happened. We've got about $142 million in investment that has occurred. It's created about 1,000 jobs. There are about 157 residential units that have been created. We've spent about $40 million in TIF funds so far. Most of that, I would tell you, at the University Center site between roads, parking deck, some other things there. None of it, I would let you... I would say on the basketball or volleyball on the arena. This has really been on bricks and mortar and sidewalks and those sorts of things. This just shows you some of those images of things that are going on at University Center. The Lowenstein Building, as you know, has had a lot of things... Thank you. Sure. Has had a tremendous amount of work. The Family Trust, the Cotton Factory, of course, was the leader in that. A lot of different development that has occurred there. What's exciting about this is the development that still is to come. There's about $280 million in investment that still is to come and about 2,500 jobs that will come along with those, with the developers that we have talked with. There's also almost 1,000 residential units that'll land in this area as well. The issue we face is we've got about $43 million in public improvements that are needed as part in order to support the work that's going on here. This shows you the University Center site and the different development that's going on there. The things that you'll see in brown in the bottom right-hand corner is where the Lowenstein Building, and then H and K are where the new arena and the parking deck are going. Everything in blue is what's going to be happening next year. So there's a tremendous amount of development that'll be occurring here next year as well as Elm. All of that, we anticipate, will be going on over the next 12 months. This is just a couple of images of the things they're looking at. The bottom left shows you the student housing that's going there. There's a new parking deck in the top left. The bottom right shows a new hotel that they pulled their permits on. And then the redo of the power... The old power building there is terrible as that place looks now. Really some exciting things that'll be going with that. The thread is where the Springs Creative folks are located or they plan to locate, and then they're doing a tremendous work here. At the bottom there, you see is the sort of... Is some parking and park that goes in front of the building. The interior of the building, though, is where we're most interested because there's 400,000 square feet in this building. It's the largest empty building in the state of South Carolina. So Commerce has their eye on this building. And I know that the owner of that building is in direct contact. They have a partner in Charlotte that they're working with, and they're in direct contact with Commerce on that building. The Exchange is a new development that's proposed that'll be going on the Good Motor Side. Of course, you guys own the Good Motor Side, and so the developer will be coming, working with you guys for the purchase of that site. And then they have a planned development there for sort of really a mixed use of residential and then retail in the right-hand side of that up near Oakland Avenue. Speaking of Oakland Avenue, the old Dorth Falls or depending on how old you are, you can date yourself to what you call that building. But the building, when you come across the bridge into downtown on the left-hand side, Lat Purser is moving on that building. They have tenants that they're currently signing. We have a development agreement in place with those, an active development agreement with them on that building. The Cotton Warehouse is there. Located there on Dave Lyle Boulevard between Dave Lyle and Oakland Avenue. We have folks who are interested in that and who are moving forward on that project as well. That's in the textile corridor. In the downtown, there are a number of other opportunities there. We currently already have seen about $24 million in investment, creating almost 380 jobs. As you know, there are new apartments on Main Street that have opened. We have the ability to issue up to $20 million in debt here. We've spent about $13 million so far with what's been done there. This just shows you some of the things that have happened there. The apartments on the top, the new Freedom Walkway, the Fountain Park Place and the new park that went across from there, and several new restaurants that have happened in downtown. As good as that is, there's some really exciting new opportunities there remaining downtown. About $133 million in investment that is offered with about 140 jobs and then a significant increase in residential units there as well. Again, we need about $29 million in additional public improvements there. These are mainly, I would tell you, for the additional public improvements are related to parking structures of one kind or another. I'll just quickly go through these. The Blue Wall Development will be going on the Herald site. Those folks are completing their environmental work. The good news is they really have not found much in the way of environmental problems. We have a letter of intent with these folks, and we are currently working on a development agreement with them. This will be mainly senior housing on this site. Grove Properties does a lot of development in Charlotte. They're very interested in activating their work here. We have a contract for purchase or sale on that site on Dave Lyle between Main and White Street for new units there. And we're working on a final development agreement with those folks as we speak. Comporium, as you know, has done some work around the new fountain. They have additional plans there for a new hotel, an innovation center, and then some additional office space that they would have on there. We have a current development agreement with them on that site. The textile corridor, just in summary, through 2019, we've leveraged about $40 million that are available in TIF funding to see $142 million in investment. There you see those, and as I mentioned, about 1,000 current jobs and about 157 residential units. With additional TIF funding at full build-out, we will see a total investment of $421 million with over 600 residential units and about 500 student housing units and a total of about 3,500 jobs that will be created in this area. In the downtown area, through 2019, we've leveraged a total potential investment of $20 million in public funds for $24 million in private investment. But I would tell you, most of what we spend has set us up for the stuff that's yet to come. So about 380 jobs have been created. We have some residential that's been built. We've got additional TIF funding that we do need there that you can see our total investment significantly... Will go up pretty significantly there along with our number of residential units and senior housing units. Over 500 jobs yet to be created there as well. So the issue that we face is the need for additional public investment to be able to support these private projects. This just gives you a list of what those things are. You can see there's about $72 million in public needs to be able to support the private investments that are there or that would be coming. The future in public improvements, we've got about $85 million in future public improvements. We do have about 8.6 million remaining capacity in the downtown TIF districts and about 4.1 million in the textile corridor. So if you back out the 8.6 and the 4.1 from the 85 and you get down to the 72 or 73 million that we... That are needed to support the private investment that's coming. This public investment, as we mentioned, results in almost $580 million in private investment, about 4,000 jobs, and about 2,000 total residential units to be created. So what we are not asking for, just to be clear in appearing before you, is any kind of extension in the term on either of these TIFs. We... With every single developer that we've met with, we are satisfied and they are satisfied that we can meet our debt requirements between now and 2039. We are not asking also for the county to take on any risk. Any risk that would be borne here will be 100% borne by the city. Wouldn't be borne by the county at all. It's just that our existing intergovernmental agreements created caps of 40 million in textile and 20 million in downtown when these were put in place many years ago without having a real sense of exactly how much investment would be coming, what that investment would look like, and the kind of public support that would be needed to be able to do that. So the things that we are asking for are two things. First of all, for an elimination of the debt cap in the downtown and textile corridor TIFs. And we feel like we're at a place now that we're pretty comfortable that the amount of money that we've talked about with you tonight is the amount of money that we'd be comfortable with not to exceed. Quite honestly, we run these numbers, and there's a not-to-exceed that has as much to do with what they need as how much we can pay for. And so we're comfortable establishing the cap that we discussed about a future 85 million less the 8.6 available in downtown and the 4.1 available in textile corridor. And then we also would like to treat both these TIF districts to going back and treating them as a single entity. These TIF districts bump up against each other, and they... And quite honestly, infrastructure built in one supports the other and vice versa. They just... When you build a parking deck that lands on one side of the street in one TIF district, people on the other side of the street are going to use that. But the way our agreements are set up now is we can't use the revenues from over in this side to support this side. And so just for the simplification of things, we'd like to treat the districts as a single entity. Someone had asked, and I did want to be clear to be able to say that the... When all's said and done, if the projections flow out like they... We think they will. We think that the textile corridor will be in about a $400,000 surplus, if you will, and the downtown TIF district will be in about a $400,000 deficit. So yes, the textile corridor would help make up some of that and help even it out. But at the end of the day, it's not like they're millions of dollars apart. They're about $400,000 higher in one and lower in the other. And so that's the offset that comes between those two. I have several things that I'm going to leave with you, and I'm just going to pass along here if you don't mind. We have a letters of support that, first of all, that I'm providing that come from several folks. And I think they've emailed maybe some of these to you, but just my opportunity is to say thanks to those. The York County... I'm sorry, the York City Economic Development Corporation, and Will Mitchell's here, and we appreciate him being here tonight. York County Chamber of Commerce, Mark Allen and Rob Youngblood are both here, and we appreciate them. The Rock Hill Economic Development Corporation also with a letter of support. The Knowledge Park Leadership Group. I've seen several of those folks. I saw Claude Close, I believe, come in. Thank you for being here, Claude. Skip Tullman, Jason Broadwater, I know are here, and I'm sorry if anyone else I might have missed. And Rock Hill School District III also is here in support. Helena Miller, the chairman of the Rock Hill School Board is also here, and so I want to appreciate her coming tonight. All these folks wholeheartedly support and ask for you to consider in a positive way the request to really, just as we mentioned, do the two things, to eliminate the debt cap and then to treat the districts as a single entity. As I mentioned, the speed to business is important for the folks that are doing these investments, and they really want to get this stuff out of the ground. So I have also provided you a schedule that shows quite ambitious schedule, I would tell you. But if you're asking me for how quickly developers are asking us to get this done, that's what that is. And then I've also provided you a summary spreadsheet that just gives you really in one place what we're asking for and what really is at risk if we were not able to work these agreements out. Let me just finally say that these development... The development agreements that the city enters into with the development communities, the community, these things are carefully scripted to ensure repayment of debt that doesn't put the city at risk. The city is bearing 100% of the risk in this, as I mentioned, not the county and not the school district. So we don't do speculative tax increment districts. We make sure when we're talking with developers about development that's coming, we want to make sure that there's sufficient development to be able to pay for the debt. And if there's not, that the developer is in a position to step in and to be able to make those debt payments as they need. I also wanted to mention that we already provide you TIF reports twice a year. I believe in January and July, they give you an update on what's gone on for the previous six months. And we certainly are certainly happy to provide. As we complete these development agreements, they'll be obviously hopefully happening much faster than just, you know, every six months. So we are certainly happy to provide those to you as they're completed for your review as well. So Chairman Johnson, I appreciate the opportunity to be here. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions from anyone? Thank you, Mr... Dr. Blackwell.
You said a little bit ago, did you say the TIF in the downtown district end up about 400 men in the red and the...
400,000.
400,000.
Yes, sir.
And then you said the textile would be 400,000 in the blacks.
Correct.
So the logic of merging the two, obviously... I certainly understand that logic.
It's quite... It's somewhat... We didn't run to those numbers. Quite honestly, that's just how they came out. And really, it's more about trying to work these numbers out as the projects come along, more so than where they end. We know that when you look at the timing of these numbers, sometimes it's just better that they... If we could share them, it helps in a year... Especially in the early years, year one, year two. By the time all the development is developed out, it's less of an issue, but it certainly is helpful to be able to share those revenues between us.
So one more question. When planning for the TIF and mentioning the need more than it allows right now, what do you think the reasons or reasons were for that? Was it just the growth of the development exploded so quickly and so big and way beyond your expectations that...
I think that's part of it. I think that it was... I think it was difficult. Until we had real development plans that we could put in front of you and that we could look at ourselves, it was hard to know exactly what the expectations of the folks who were doing this development. Quite honestly, in 2004, we didn't see the Herald going out of business and abandoning their building. And somebody being able to come in and tear that thing down and put something up brand-new there that might need public improvements associated with it. I mean, there's just things you just don't know. But now everything seems to have come much better into focus, so we have a much better idea of, I think, really of what we... What the expectations these developers are on each of these sites.
I do have one more question I'll add, I'm sorry. What is the... And you may have to get back to me on this, but what is the percentage of public versus private land in those two TIF districts?
I can find that out for you, but I can't find that out. Yes, sir.
Thank you. Thank you.
And that's going to be a little bit skewed, just because we own the Bleachery site now. So that drives the numbers up just a little bit, but we can certainly find that out.
Okay. Any other questions?
I asked most of mine when they presented, so, since it's my second time seeing it, I'm trying to give everybody else a chance.
Certainly happy to answer any questions even beyond tonight that y'all might have.
The 72 million in new needs, originally, help me here, make sure I have my math, we originally came out, we said 60 million was your cap?
Forty and 20.
Forty and 20. And now you need an additional 72. Will any of this 72 be applied to the items that you originally came to counsel for, what that was, was that, four, three, four years, five years ago now, whatever it was? Or is this all just entirely new needs?
Well, I think that the original list, for instance, from 2004, I think envisioned parking structures. So yes, some of this money, and much of this money, quite honestly, will go toward parking decks. I don't know that we probably envisioned in 2004 that there'd be a need for as many parking structures as we have, but yes, I mean, certainly there are things that were on that list that would need to be funded out of that 72 million dollars.
Chairman Johnson, I have a question. I'm excited about this plan for Rock Hill, I've seen it a couple of times, it blew me away when you guys sat me down and kind of laid it out for me. Give this council and those in audience and watching on live stream, what's the typical time it takes to do a redevelopment, like we've seen in Greenville, Columbia, Durham? What's kind of, what's been kind of the going trend as to how long it takes from start, just really seeing things get traction and for the community to say, hey, this is really turning out what they said it would be?
The good news for all of this is, because, those who know me well, I'm fairly impatient, so I like to see things happen quickly. The good news is, is these things are going to have to happen quickly. Because they are, because the investors who are working on this development, who are interested in these development agreements we're negotiating with, because they're all interested in the opportunities on piece of this, they have to get going next year. I mean, they have to. And so we are in a rush here toward the end of the year, trying to complete these development agreements over the course of the end of this year or first quarter of next year, because really, they have to go, and quite honestly, since we're not changing the end of the term, 2039 is a hard and fast date for all of us. And so, if we shrink the term of the bonds that we issue, those debt payments go up. And so developers are the ones that are on the hook when those debt payments go up, that there's not sufficient tax revenues to be able to do that. So this has to have, this stuff really has to get done, and people have to be moving dirt by next summer.
What's, if this council was given a deadline to make this happen for you guys, what's our absolute deadline?
So I've given you a schedule, and that has, that has, if you were asking me what would be the schedule to be on, that's the schedule that I wanted you to have tonight. You know, we could probably slip a meeting or two, but we wouldn't want to slip much more than that. The development of the community just is anxious to move on this, and we're at a bit of a standstill until we can get all the intergovernmental agreements completed.
Have you, have you shared with county management your debt service payback on this? Because you don't really get 20 years to pay it back, you get 19, because it'll be 2020 before we even get there. Have you shared those numbers so that they could be looked at? Just, as you can imagine, we don't, from a county perspective, we'd like the largest municipality in the county not to be in a financial crunch in 19 years. And so have you shared that with Mr. Madden, so we can look at it?
If I haven't, I certainly will. There was a lot of moving parts last week, and I can't remember if it ended up, I think maybe I shared it with your FA, but I'm not certain. I have to go back, but we can certainly do that.
If you would share that with us, so we can, we can just look at it and...
Not a problem at all, happy to listen.
And I'm going to go ahead, just so that everyone knows, I'm not just sitting here taking a nap, I'm going to go ahead and address a few concerns that I had last time, just so that I can reiterate them with y'all, and everyone out there can know what my concerns are, and what you're going to need to address with that. You know, Christie and I were on the committee almost five years ago to look at the extension of the TIF in 2014, I believe it was. And I'm trying to remember, the original TIF date was 85 or 88?
In the downtown, I think 88, I think the textile was 2004.
Okay, so 88 on the downtown, so, my concern is, and I, my biggest concern is recessions are a normal part of the economy, and recessions are not a horrible thing. I'm a financial advisor, and I deal with them a lot, and I tell clients that, but they are normal, and they are something you have to plan for. And, you know, from 88 to 2039 is 51 years that this TIF will be in place. And over that timeframe, about every four to five years, there's been something that has been back before this council with a request on one of these TIFs. Whether it's an extension of this, or a movement of that, or raising a debt cap here or that. And in this discussion, again, I've not heard anything about, these are all great numbers, and these will be wonderful all this happens, but we all know, probably within the next three to four years, and that's very optimistic, there's going to be another recession. And that's going to affect your ability to make debt payments, it's going to affect these, all of these contractors and developers' ability to do their payments. And I know you say that there, you have agreements with them, that they'll step up and pay the shortfall, but there were a lot of companies that had agreements before 2008 to pay shortfalls that weren't around in 2009 to pay them. And that concerns me, because as we said, we want to, you are the largest, you, Rock Hill, the largest municipality in the county, and probably the largest economic development driver in the county. So we want to support it, and I want to support it, but I want to make sure that we're making good financial decisions for our citizens, and that we're not putting the rest of the county on the hook for something that we're not planning for or not seeing in the future. And that's, that's been my concern, and it's still my concern.
So typically, let me just give you an example of Riverwalk. Typically, when we put, when we put these clawbacks in place to make sure the city is covered, because, and I came up on the finance side of the world, so I mean, I get it. So we put, we put things in place to make sure that we are fully protected. So Riverwalk is a great example. We entered into TIF agreements out there to do, and issued debt out there when that place first started. Basically, the clawback with that developer was, is if we, if there's not sufficient taxes to be able to pay the debt, then you have to write us a check. And any single year that you fail to write us a check, then you put at risk the full thousand acres that are out there, and that becomes, and the city takes ownership of that. And so the city gets $40 million worth of land on a $10 million bond issue. And, you know, I feel like even if we could sell it 50 cents on the dollar, we're still going to be, we're still doing pretty well. So that's the kind of, those, when we talk about covering ourselves in development agreements, those are exactly the kinds of things that we do to make sure that the things you're talking about, we're very concerned about, and we want to make sure they don't happen as well.
Anyone else? Mr. Hamilton?
So, David, my question is, you know, the proposal is to not raise the debt cap, but to eliminate the debt cap. Is there any reason to believe that there will be additional projects before you, in the very short term? You mentioned that window is closing. Are there other projects that are pending that would require the need to raise the debt cap beyond the numbers that are in front of us right now?
Thank you, we talked about that actually last week. The development of these, of these projects take up basically all the land that's available for development, if you will, within these TIF districts. So there's just not room for additional projects to go. So at some point, we want to talk about how much the projects need in terms of support, but we also look at how much, from the revenues that they generate, how much debt can be supported, period, regardless of how much anybody needs. So we're kind of at that place. I mean, I think that the 72 million or so that we're talking about in additional capacity is really all we think that can be issued to be able to support any other kinds of development that would go there. And we, we know, other folks have talked about development, it's not the kind of thing that, when we've seen from them, that actually, we just feel like that we're in a good place when it comes to that. I mean, that's a, that's a fair point, and we've kicked that around internally. We feel comfortable that the debt cap that we put in place will cover us.
Anyone else?
Also, Mike, real quick, David, unfortunately, I was kind of doing my own math while we were going through the slides. One of the slides mentioned, I think it was $86 million, and identified, there was line items for identified public infrastructure...
Right.
...which leaves a significant amount for, for other projects that were not included among those line items. What, can you speak to those remaining funds, and where those would go, and where we can expect to see those investments?
So I think on the spreadsheet that I gave you, it should account for the full, the full additional 72 million, or whatever, the 86 million, I'm not sure, I can't remember which is on that spreadsheet, but...
Okay.
But it should account for every single dollar, and where we're proposing that they would be spent.
I guess I do have one comment. And I thank all the folks who sent their letters of support, I know the council's going to consider this, and consider the information, make sure that we're protecting the taxpayers before we make a decision. It looks to me, from the school district, that they've actually been negotiating and discussing this for about nine months now, and I know that I just became aware of it within the last few weeks. So one of the questions I guess I have for staff is, is the timeframe that the city is requesting, is that, is that an issue? Is that something we're going to have trouble with?
Auditors showed up today. I'm going to be working the auditors probably now through the end of the year. You know, I was up here Saturday and Sunday trying to get ready for that. I really wouldn't have any time to start looking at this, probably until January, to be honest with you. You know, the school district, I guess nine months, I see what's in the letter, they've been dealing with this, it's not going to take me that long to go through these numbers. I would like the time to be able to go through and do a review, and give you all a recommendation based off the numbers, and have the adequate time to drill down into that. Would probably be talking maybe two to three months, if I had to guess.
David, do you think that's an issue? For me, the big issue is, is being able to project accurately, project accurately the revenue that you anticipate generating for the payback, and to ensure that it's not going to extend the timelines that you've requested. Is that...
I'll tell you what would help, if you guys would be comfortable going ahead and doing your first and second readings, and getting those out of the way while we're working on this, and then you, then you, you know, you've still got opportunity at your final reading to do the final request. And we're obviously happy to share any kind of, any kind of financial information that you might need. But just, again, a reminder, this is not a financial, this is, the city's the one taking the financial risk here, there's no financial risk to the county involved in this
Anyone? One last time, Dr. Blackwell.
Kevin, you talking the end of January, or the end of February?
I haven't looked at anything yet, so honestly, I couldn't tell you.
Thank you, Ms. Beahan.
Thank you all, appreciate you all having a seat tonight.
Thank you, David.
Patrick Hamilton to provide Pennies for Progress quarterly update.
Good evening, council. As usual, I'm going to go through and highlight a handful of projects, I'm not going to hit on all of them, but, you know, feel free to ask me at the end or whenever if there's a project or two that I didn't, didn't hit on. If we'll look at projects that are under construction, Highway 160 West going into North Carolina, this is actually standing down on the North Carolina end of the job, looking back towards Zor Road. You can see the curb and gutter, guardrail, all's been installed, storm drainage. This is standing at Zor Road, looking toward Gold Hill Road. So you can see they've gotten pretty much all the asphalt installed on that side of the road, they are hoping to finish the asphalt necessary this week, the weather's supposed to clear up later this week, so where they can then shift traffic onto that side, hopefully next week. Highway 274, Pole Branch Road, this is the five-lane bridge over Mill Creek on 274. They've continued the progress since the last time we spoke, so that new, new bridge is coming along. Just a reminder, they are going to build half that bridge, switch traffic, then tear down the existing bridge, and build the other half of that bridge. This is looking at the intersection of Pole Branch Road and Fuel Road. The Pole Branch six-month closure is in effect, it closed last week. As you can see, that's Fuel Road on the right side of your screen, and that car is turning left onto Pole Branch Road there, so that, that closure is happening as we speak. Anderson Cowan Farm Road, it's an intersection realignment, this picture's kind of looking towards the city operations center, you can see they have curb and gutter, storm drainage installed on the majority of the project. The weather's going to hit this project this winter, so it will be next spring or early summer before this project is finished. Cherry Road, this one is almost done, thank goodness, this has been going on for most of this year. It was a very in-depth project, a reminder, we did have to dig down 13 inches and essentially rebuild the entire road, so it's been quite, quite a project, but as you can see, that's the final surface being installed there, they still have a little bit more left to do, hopefully they can wrap that up this week, since the weather is clearing up, excuse me. Once they finish the main line paving, they'll come back and do the side roads and driveways and tie those in as well, but the main part is the main line paving should be finished up, hopefully this week, if the weather can hold out for us. Gold Hill I-77, this project, majority of this work's being done at night. As you can see on the screen, there's some new pavement there on I-77, they have shifted traffic, they've also shifted traffic on Gold Hill Road, this allows them to begin work on widening the bridge over I-77. So we, I know there was a little bit of hiccup in traffic when, when the traffic was shifted on Gold Hill Road, we are working through some issues with the DOT on that to help traffic get to that interchange as quickly as they can. But again, bulk of the work being done at night, so that definitely helps from a traffic standpoint.
Patrick, on...
Yes, sir.
...to that Gold Hill side. One thing that I've noticed is that instead of using Gold Hill Road, now the traffic's decided to come down Pleasant, trying to get on 160. The other morning, if you know where the Wendy's is on 160, it took me 48 minutes to get to the Peach Stand, from there to there. This morning, it took me a little over 32 minutes to get from the recycling center at Baxter onto I-77 South. And it's mainly because what, when you get up to an intersection, you realize what they're doing, cars who are waiting at the light to make a left, so many, they just go out in the intersection, and they block all of the intersection, and so traffic can't, now traffic can't go from the other lights, and so the entire, and it's a lot coming from trying to get out of Baxter, it's a lot coming down, there was a wreck on 77 this morning, it was, it was kind of a, the perfect storm, so to speak. Is there a way to get DOT to monitor the light sequences better, and also perhaps have the sheriff's office, or someone give us a police, a law enforcement presence to try to encourage cars not to just sit out through two light cycles out in the middle of the road?
Certainly, yes, I will talk to DOT about that with their traffic signal department down in Chester. I know 160 is one of their items they look at very often. So with this project going on, that will divert more traffic down there, traffic tries to find the path of least resistance, so with the construction going on there, they are going to try to find other routes, so we will look into that. Barrett, Highway 321 Connector Project over in Clover, this is a bottomless core that's been installed, the backfill has occurred on it. Couldn't really get a good picture of this project due to all the mud, they, if you look kind of at the back of the picture, they're doing a lot of borrow work, bringing some field dirt to try to balance out the site, so they are working out there as best they can in between the weather and the rain, but that's, the project is moving along on track for a summer of 2020 completion. Now I want to highlight all the projects that we're in the middle of right-of-way acquisition on, a lot of these are, you know, same ones y'all seen the last few times, again, right-of-way can take anywhere from a year to two years on, on projects, depending on the number of parcels, and how many, you know, corporations are involved. So Highway 2151, Highway 160 East, Riverview Road, Highway 72, US 321 Johnson Railroad Intersection here in York, and Bait Harvey Road in Clover. Bait Harvey Road is a Pennies for project, that one doesn't have near as many parcels on there for right-of-way acquisitions, that one will probably be going to construction first out of all those on the screen. There's a handful of other projects where we're at the final plan stage, Highway 557, the five-lane project in Lake Wiley, the final plans are to be submitted this month, that does include a new five-lane bridge, those plans will be submitted to DOT, should be by the end of this month. Mount Gallant Road, this is from Dave Lyle to Anderson, a three-lane road widening. Final plans are on track to be submitted, hopefully this week, but I went ahead and showed this month. We are coordinating with the Panthers, this is Mount Gallant, stretch of Mount Gallant runs along the new site, we are coordinating with their traffic folks to determine the... We are coordinating with their traffic folks to determine the, the best way to build our project and their infrastructure needs as well. So we are, again, in continued conversations with them. Fort Mill Southern Bypass, Sprat intersection realignment, right there at Riverview Elementary School. We've already submitted final plans once to DOT, we have gotten comments back on those, consultant is addressing those comments now and look to get those final plans back in for review as, as quickly as possible. And we have several projects going to bid this winter, US three twenty-one Kings Mountain intersection, this is a Pennies for project that we are ready to bid this winter. Consultant is putting the bid manual together now, we've gotten all of the necessary right-of-way and permissions, DOT has approved the plans. One more minor comment for DHEC to approve the plans as well, and then we will be ready to bid this project. Pennies for resurfacing project, this will be a group we're sending, is there all state roads that DOT will be bidding out in January for? It is about ten miles long, most of these are in the Rock Hill area. We have a second Pennies for resurfacing group.
You said they're bidding out in January, can you give us kind of an estimate for completion date?
I would imagine it will have a November thirtieth completion date.
Of the same year?
Correct, I'll have to verify that with the DOT, but typically when they bid their projects in the winter, the four roads should be able to be completed, they'll put a November thirtieth, but I'll, I'll verify that. Second resurfacing bid, DOT is putting out for us as well, these are more projects on the western side of the county, Clover area, Sharon, thirteen and a half miles. Again, I would imagine there'd be a same probably November thirtieth completion date.
And the, the Sharon project, that's from downtown heading out toward?
Heading south on forty-nine.
Okay.
Yep, and then Woodlawn.
Cause I know they patched in Sharon and just kind of patched a few places and I've gotten some feedback on that.
And there will be a third Pennies for resurfacing bid going out this winter as well, these are more county roads that the county is going to bid out. One of the, I think Hood Town, we're trying to, our public works is probably gonna try to pay that one in-house, so we'll be able to save a little money there, but the other five roads will be bid out. We're putting that package together now, ten miles, if you take off Hood Town, it'll be around eight or eight and a half. So we have a lot of resurfacing projects hitting the streets this winter and being active throughout all of next year. And again, I didn't hit on all the projects, but I'll be happy to answer any questions on projects I didn't hit or any other questions you may have.
Any questions? Mr. Winkler?
I see representatives from York School District One here, and I voiced concern about this one, I know they're working on it now, but I would like to have seen it in the summertime, but where are we on Hunter Street? And where do we, what do we see happening there? I know they're starting some.
I ran through Hunter Street last week, they have done some, some reclamation out there, some work out there. If the weather permits, they'll get it done this year, again, we're getting into that time of the year where it's hit or miss, you know, today is rainy and cold and Friday it'll be sixty-five degrees and sunny. So there's several projects in, several roads in the York area that are in that contract, a couple of them they've already completed, and I think there's two or three others that they're still waiting to get back in on.
I know that was a DOT decision, but I would appreciate if you'd tell them again that I think they could have made a better decision than starting Hunter Street after school started and starting it this late in the year to where they're probably not gonna finish it till next year, and it's caused a mess and a safety concern for our students and our citizens over there.
Ms. Cox?
We disbanded the citizen committee and the Pennies ad hoc committee after the audit was conducted and you were hired, and we felt extremely comfortable that this program was in good hands. The only thing that I like to make sure that we ask every time that we do these reports is, are all of the projects that were promised to the public that are on the Pennies programs, are they on schedule to be funded with the exception of Neely Road, which was a contingency?
Correct.
Road, everything is, is on schedule?
At this time, every project will be funded based on the revenues we've gotten to this point. Now, again, if something happens in two years and our revenues go down, Kevin and I have talked about that, and obviously those bottom projects get put in jeopardy. But at this time, every project is moving forward. In fact, Highway twenty-one, which is project fifteen on Pennies four, which is, you know, not the bottom project, but is one project above Neely, that one's under design and full steam ahead as well. So we are, we're working on, every, every project is active right now except Neely Road.
Mr. Roddy?
I see they've completed McCall's Highway, did we come in, I'm sure we were way over budget, cause this thing went on and on and on for a while.
Believe it or not, we should have probably about eight hundred thousand dollars left on the contract once we pay out the retainage and, and the final invoice.
So we'll be under budget on it?
We'll be a little bit under, we, we did hit the contractor with over two hundred thousand dollars in liquidated damages from the not being completed on time.
Right, okay.
I got an invoice in today, and there'll be one more invoice after the one I got today, so we will put about eight hundred thousand or so back in the bank on that project.
Maybe I missed when you were going through your presentation, so where are we on the seventy-two?
Seventy-two is in.
Cause I know we're, we're still trying to work stuff out with the fire department and.
We're in right-of-way acquisition right now, and again, there's a lot of parcels on that project. We're starting to make some offers for, to acquire some right-of-way, but with the number of tracks on there, it's, it's gonna take a good bit longer.
Now, that project was on, what, Pennies two or three?
Two, three, and four. There's five of them like that.
Yeah, it, it's amazing how something like Kings Mountain three twenty-one, that's on Pennies four, it's ready to go now, then you look back and see that the seventy-two project has been on there forever and a day, and I, I.
I can speak to that, yes, sir, so.
I think it was only like three parcels or something.
Well, on Kings Mountain, there was no right-of-way to acquire, we had to get permissions from three property owners.
Oh, that was simple.
Took about two months, the design was, not to oversimplify, but it was a simple design where we're realigning a side, a side road into a main road. So most of it's within the existing right-of-way, again, I don't wanna oversimplify, but it's, it's not a, a three-mile widening project. Seventy-two, it was on Pennies two, again, it was at the bottom, didn't have the funding, got moved to Pennies three.
Went to the bottom.
Again, it was at the bottom, so we didn't start design on it till 2015. So really being in year four right now, we're actually doing pretty good schedule-wise, cause we also had a major scope change, cause originally that was supposed to be a, a three-lane project all the way through. About halfway through, we took a step back, made it a five-lane project, so we had a good bit of redesign in there. So I understand the frustration, it's been on the bottom before and the bottom on Pennies three, and, and, you know, I get asked about that project as well, you know, when's it gonna happen? When's it gonna happen? Traffic out there is continuing to increase. But, you know, there, there's reasons why it's taken this long, but we are moving forward with it and working as quickly as we can to acquire the right-of-way out there as best we can.
Dr. Blackwell?
Patrick, I feel kind of left out, so I thought I'd ask you a question.
Sure.
Give me the, remind me again about the deal on Highway twenty-one expansion, I think it was nineteenth on the list for Pennies four?
Pennies four is project number fifteen out of sixteen.
So what's your anticipation on that one?
Like I mentioned earlier, we're moving forward with it, we're doing all of our environmental permitting work now, once we get that finalized, then we'll begin preliminary design on the project. So right now, the only thing holding that project back is just the time it takes to design it.
So what would be your hunch in terms of the chances of it making Pennies four?
The way I feel right now, I think it will get funded in Pennies four. A lot can happen in four or five years, but the way we're progressing now in our projects and some of the budgets we're seeing, revenue that has been received up to this point from the Department of Revenue, I feel good at this point on, you know, November eighteenth, two thousand nineteen that.
I'll, I'll take it.
That it'll be funded through Pennies four.
Since you had brought it up earlier and I didn't ask, Sprat and Southern Bypass, have we cleared the hurdles with the previous owner that we've had to issue?
We are this close, we are, attorneys are reviewing the final agreement, and we have about two lines left to agree on, and then it'll be bringing to y'all and council hopefully in December.
How much of a delay has that previous developer owner caused in this project?
Well, it, it wasn't necessarily the previous owner's fault, it was the fact that we had the pedestrian tunnel designed in one spot when it was an intersection project, and then when Pennies four happened, now that whole area became widened, which means the alignment was gonna shift, so therefore the location of the pedestrian tunnel had to shift. So it was decided, you know, we can either redesign the whole tunnel and lose time, or we can move the tunnel to the widening project. So we did lose a handful of months, but we made the decision several months back, once we get the okay from the property owner to relocate the tunnel, that we went ahead and moved forward with the final plans, which is why they've already been submitted once already. So it, it, it didn't help, but it actually saves us money and time in the long run, being able to move that tunnel to the widening project.
I think you and I have been talking about this tunnel for about a year, so that's, that was my question.
It's been quite some time, it has indeed.
Any other questions? Ms. Love?
I just want to welcome you to my world. In case there's anybody from District Two, District Two here in the audience, I just want to say that just because I'm not asking any questions tonight, it doesn't mean that I haven't been asking questions every day, right, Patrick?
Absolutely.
So, um, we, they, they're looking at maybe some, some changes there for that, for the light at Pole Branch. Did you say that was being monitored by, by video or something?
Video detection at, at two seventy-four and Fuel Road, yes.
Yeah, and I can't remember the other thing that you said, that I got an answer from you today, and I read it so quickly that I don't remember.
These speeding on Fuel, we talked with the sheriff's department, they're gonna get one of the mobile radar machines up there, hopefully on Wednesday.
Okay, that'll be great, thank you.
Thank you, Patrick.
You.
Public forum session, Mary Williams. I would just remind you to state your name and address, and you have two minutes.
Hello, my name is Mary Williams, three one three Squirrel Lane, Lake Wylie, South Carolina. I am a member of the Homeowners Association Board of Directors for my little community called Oakden. I'm here to present this again tonight. Evidently, when this was presented a couple of weeks ago, some names were left off, so we wanted to get them official on the record for you. And the main subject we're here for tonight is your one and only old business item, which is the second reading of the overlay, it hitting the pause button on development in Lake Wylie. And thank you for your time.
Thank you. Under consent agenda, we are moving number, item number four to new business number five. I've also been asked by Mr. Hamilton to move new business number one and number two to after executive session. If everyone is in agreement, we'll need a motion. So moved.
Second.
As amended.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, hearing none, motion passes. Counsel to hold a public hearing and approve third reading of an ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of a fee in lieu of tax agreement by and between York County, South Carolina, and New Indy Kataba LLC, formerly identified by the county as Project Origami. With respect to certain economic development property in the county whereby such property will be subject to certain payments in lieu of taxes and other matters related thereto. Is there anyone here who would like to speak against? Oh, sorry. Is there anyone who would like to speak against? Is anyone who would like to speak for in favor? Yes, sir, please come forward.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak, my name's Rick Hartman, I'm the chief operating officer for New Indy. If you want my address, it's eight thirty Deep Springs, Claremont, California. As you know, the New Indy purchased a former Resolute Forest Products site, and the field closed on December thirty-first, twenty eighteen. We are a manufacturer of container board, which is the, the product that goes in the cardboard boxes. We primarily operate recycled container board mills across the country, but this was an opportunity for us to purchase a virgin, called a virgin mill, the Kataba mill that makes today communication papers, and we want to plan to convert that mill to produce virgin container board. It's about a ten-month process, and we're in the, the throes of finalizing engineering and purchasing of the equipment to, to manufacture that. The, our intent is to convert this facility, and as I said, we've gonna commit two hundred and forty million dollars to that process. And we also, including the purchase price, we have additional investments that we're doing in new equipment. So the opportunity to come before this group and thank both York County and the South Carolina Department of Commerce for this assistance that you've provided in this process to have this tax abatement. More importantly, I'd like to really thank you, the York County Council, for the support and consideration of this property tax incentive request before you. The support's critical to the facility's continued growth and success, it'll breathe new life into the mill, which was really headed on a downward spiral. It'll cement the future of the mill, and it will actually provide and preserve jobs going forward. So again, thanks to the council for the opportunity, opportunity to appear before you. On behalf of the joint venture partners, New Indy, the employees of Kataba, and myself, we look forward to a close and long-lasting relationship with York County.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in favor?
I was close.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, hearing none, motion passes. Is there a new motion?
Move to approve third reading. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. Mr. Roddy can return. Counsel to hold a public hearing and approve third reading of an ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of a fee in lieu of tax and incentive agreement by and between York County, South Carolina, and National Machinery and Fabrication, Inc., a company previously identified as Project N M F. With respect to certain economic development property in the county whereby such property will be subject to certain payments in lieu of ad valorem taxes and other matters related thereto. Is there anyone here who would like to speak against? Is there anyone in favor? Yes, sir.
Mr. Herrmann in county council, my name is Jimmy Hutto, I'm the owner and president of National Machining and Fabrication Incorporated. I live in Rock Hill, South Carolina, my business is located in York County as well. We have been there since nineteen ninety-seven. My team and I are responsible for the planning and developing of our operations at National Machining and Fabrication. We perform work for about thirty industrial companies. This expansion is very important and will allow us for continual growth and expansion of our operation. We perform work for at least thirty to forty industrial companies. We will create forty new jobs in this process. I would like to thank the county council for their consideration of approval for incentives being offered for the project. This support and consideration has made a difference in my decision on keeping the existing industry and the new expansion here in York County. Again, I would like to say thank you to the county council and the economic development. It's very much appreciated by employees and management. God has blessed our business in the past and will in the future. National Machine and Fabrication Incorporated is a leader with some of the most modern equipment in today's market. In manufacturing equipment, we produce and manufacture fabrication and machining, water jet, fiber laser through innovation, design, and retrofitting, and assembly of any type of metals, plastics, and rubber products that is used in the industrial manufacturing operations. We thank you for your time, we thank you for your consideration, and that's what I have to offer.
Thank you, sir. Would anyone else like to speak in favor?
Motion to close.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, hearing none, is there a new motion?
Motion to approve. Second.
Any discussion?
Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Real quickly, I think there's a perhaps common misconception that our economic development efforts in the county only address the larger companies moving into the area. I think this is a great example of longstanding business here in this county that has served our area by employing people in, in great jobs, making an investment in, in producing even more in this county and employing even more people, and our economic development group engaging with them and this council voting to, to do something to make sure that the people that are adding value in this county get some consideration for their efforts from us. So I just want to point that out before we move forward, and thank you, Mr. Hutto, for your continued investment in this county.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, hearing none, motion passes. I'm sorry. Six to one. Counsel to consider second reading of an ordinance to amend the York County Code of Ordinances to expand the geographic boundaries of the Lake Wylie zoning overlay district to add new section one fifty-five point three four seven, temporary prohibition of new development. 155.347, temporary prohibition of new development, temporarily prohibiting the acceptance or consideration of applications for rezoning within the district, to temporarily prohibit apartment condominium and townhome dwellings within the district, to set a minimum lot size for residential uses within the district, to provide exemptions for these new prohibitions and requirements, to end the application of section 155.347 on March 31, 2021, to provide for a public hearing, to provide for other matters relating thereto.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes.
Mr. Winkler.
I would like to offer a amendment to the motion. Um, I would like on prohibiting the acceptance or consideration of applications for rezoning within the district to be amended to prohibiting the acceptance or consideration of applications for rezon, for residential rezonings within the district. Um, I expressed concern last time in the reading that, um, just to blanketly stop all rezonings gives me a little concern of, um, you know, I understand residential, I support it 100%, but there may be a business or something that makes sense the residents might would want, and if we stop all rezoning, then we out, we will stop anything if it, if it was something that needed to be done. So, I'll offer that as a, an amendment to the motion.
We have a amendment to the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
There is a second. Discussion on the amendment.
Robert, can you restate that one more time?
Yes, um, the line that says temporarily prohibiting the acceptance or consideration of applications for rezoning in the district, I just would like that to say prohibiting the acceptance or consideration of applications for residential rezoning within the district.
So I guess that kind of answers my question about the, uh, commercial concerns. Some people mentioned the first go around, because obviously the commercial stuff's kind of a clear cut and creates more of a problem for the lake. But, so that's essentially not included in this, correct? Am I?
Yes, it would not be.
To get a little clarification, what do you mean by it creates more problems for the lake?
Well, I mean, if you have a big commercial property, I'm not gonna mention anybody, but like the example, the guy I mentioned in the retention pond and all that and runoff from that and all the issues they had, not to mention the clear cutting they do to, of that big of an area.
That's, that's really more of a, a residential issue. Um, and I would like for, um, David Hudsith to, to speak to why that actually was included in the recommendation by management. Um, and then I'll add a little to that.
The prohibition on rezonings was, was intended to apply to everything simply because it's, uh, the justification for providing, uh, the prohibition for a temporary period of time was so that we could study the area and make recommendations as to what needed to change within the small area plan. Uh, while I think, uh, Michael Kendry may want to speak to the legalities of it, I think, I don't see any, I think it's well within council's ability to do that. I think some of the justifications that we offered was for, uh, the time period to study that and to delay, uh, to prohibit all rezonings during the period. I think most of the property that is suitable for commercial probably is already zoned commercial. Um, and certainly if you didn't include that prohibition, council has no obligation to actually rezone property. You could still hear that, but the, the ordinance is drafted and the justification for it really relates to, uh, a prohibition on all rezonings for the purpose of studying the area during the 18-month period.
So, um, we've waited long enough to get this done. And quite frankly, any, anything that's along Highway 49 and 274, for those of you who are not as familiar with Lake Wiley as some of the rest of the people in the room, that's already zoned commercial. And what we've gotten over the past years are a lot of storage units in a 2.6-mile strip from the bridge down to the, the intersection of 274, 557, and 49, there are seven storage units and six car washes. And the purpose of this small area plan and, and the purpose of extending this small area plan down 274 is to be sure that we, that we, again, have the horse before the cart and that we don't just allow anything and everything to come in there. Most of those parcels are already rezoned, I mean, I'm sorry, are already zoned commercial. There is no shortage of commercial property in Lake Wiley. Um, you know, now as we get on out 557 and 55, that's the area that's, that's been added, that needs to be studied and needs to be determined what, what should be there, whether that should be residential, whether that should be commercial, or a combination of, of the two. So, um, I, I feel very strongly that we need to, um, maintain what the county management has recommended and what I feel like is, is the right thing to do within this small area plan.
Anyone else? Mr. Winkler.
Um, I understand that and my, my concern with the, you know, there, there's a lot of commercial property there, but if we do a complete prohibition of any rezoning for commercial, that could mean that there's somebody who wants to bring in a commercial property or a commercial business that doesn't fit that commercial zone, and that we would not even be able to rezon that even if it's from a BD3 to a BD1 or something that's less, um, impactful on the area, we would not be able to do that. We would just have to tell them they gotta wait the 18 months, because we will not be doing any rezoning if we do this. Um, I understand commer, you know, residential, we don't need to change anything, they can do by right, but we don't need to, we don't need to give anybody any more of a high-dense rezoning on this. I support 100% not rezoning any residential to a higher density, but I still have concern there. There is a lot of commercial there, but it may not be the appropriate commercial for what someone would want or what the citizens may even support, and we would not be able to rezon it as this is written right now.
You know, people don't rezone for better things. They rezone for worse things. And so we did a comp plan, we spent, I spent 18 months on the Comprehensive Land Use Committee trying to determine what was, what was the right thing. And it's, in the past three years, everybody's been reluctant to allow me to even talk about some of the things, you know, we've got the Vista that we denied two months ago that was, that was in our comp plan allows for 330 homes. So what I'm, what I'm saying is that there's not been any concerns about what's in that comp plan up until now, when we're getting ready to say, hey, we need to, we need to take a breather. And, and so, that, that concerns me. And I don't want anybody to think that I'm not commercial friendly. I'm very commercial and business friendly. Um, I, I took a lot of time and rezoned 140 acres from residential to commercial on Highway 557 last year. So it's not a matter of, of me not being developer friendly on one hand and not being commercial friendly on another hand, it's, it's just, it's just not that, it's just not like that. So if, if I need to sit down with somebody between now and the third reading and give you an exact map of how everything is zoned, I'm, I'm more than willing to present that. I could almost do it tonight, but I brought a map that just shows residential instead of the commercial zoning. So, um, it's, again, it's important that this, that this overlay amendment be as, as it's written. It's very important.
Dr. Black.
So I told you, what, 18 months ago?
You've told me three times in the last year that you would support it.
For whatever you wanted to overlay, the whole shebang. So just for clarification for Robert's amendment, so I'll make sure I understand you don't support his amended motion.
I don't. I don't think it's necessary.
Okay. Anyone else?
I guess I'd. I do have a comment. I wasn't aware that we were gonna discuss some changes, and I'm certainly not opposed to. I think, you know, if I'm, if I'm living in that area, I want to make sure that there's commercial base to support the taxes for the schools and for the growth that occurs. But what I'm confused about is does this change actually result in if it's restricted to, uh, residential rezonings, this would, this would basically allow a commercial owner to rezone to anything. They could apply for rezoning for, um, I guess residential that doesn't, um, run counter to this, or I, I, I just would like to have some information. And I guess my point is, I'm willing to consider an amendment that, that has been vetted by our management and that our legal staff has determined is not a problem, but I don't want us to vote, I don't personally want to vote for something that's gonna have a legal issue. So I'd like to hear from Michael Kendry if the amendment, if you think that poses an issue, or if you think that it's fine.
Thank you.
I think it poses an issue with regards to legislative findings, as Mr. Hudsith alluded to. I would want to evaluate the request in terms of the underlying purposes, uh, set out in the ordinance, and I too was unaware of that request before tonight. I would like some time to evaluate that.
Based on Mr. Kendry's statement, would you reconsider your motion at this time and perhaps bring it back up to third reading?
I would, because, uh, honestly, I had not thought about, um, the possibility of someone rezoning a commercial to a residential in, in when I first thought, brought that up. So I will withdraw my amendment to the motion.
And you withdraw your second. We are back to the original motion. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, hearing none, motion passes. Want to remind everybody, we've moved number one and two under new business. We have moved items one and two under new business to the end after executive session. Counsel to consider first reading by title only, an ordinance to amend York County Code of Ordinances, Chapter 51.05, Water and Sewer Rates and Charges, Terms and Conditions of Service, Sections B2 and B10, in order to amend the water rate and sewer rate schedules and provide for other matters related thereto.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, hearing none, motion passes. Counsel to approve the amendment to the contract of purchase and sale and agreement between Five Star Holdings LLC and York County in order to extend the due period, the due diligence period applicable to the speculative building on Ginth Court until December 16th, 2019.
Move to approve.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, hearing none, motion passes. Counsel to adopt a resolution naming the McKelvey Center Annex in honor of Michael C. Scoggins.
Um, I make motion, we approve the resolution, and I'm the one that asked for it to be pulled out.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Winkler.
Yes, the reason I asked for it to be pulled out is I think, uh, Mr. Scoggins did a lot for the county and a lot for the, um, the, um, that annex and a lot researched. I've got a couple of his books in my office that he wrote, um, and he worked right up till the end. Um, he was, was, um, finally fell victim to cancer, uh, but he was a, a great man, a very loved York County and the history of York County, and I felt like if we were gonna honor him with a resolution, um, it shouldn't be in a consent agenda where nobody knew we did it. So I asked for it to be pulled out so that we could vote on it publicly and make that resolution public knowledge.
Fair enough. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, hearing none, motion passes. Committees and other reports. I believe your committee met tonight.
Finance and Operations Committee met today at 5:30 and considered applications for service for various boards. As a result of those meetings, we're making recommendations for the following, that Raymond Crabbe be considered, um, for a first term on the vacant at-large seat for Hospitality Tax Advisory Committee, that, um, Matthew Velkovich be recommended for a first term on District 6 Planning Commission when Bill Hargrove's term expires on December 31st. Board of Assessment Appeals, we recommended the approval of Scott Childers for a second term in District 3, and Greg Fitzgerald for a second term in District 7. Building Board of Appeals, we recommended the appointment of Stephen MacArthur for a first term in electrician slot, and Doyle Roach for a first term in the general contractor slot. CVB, we recommended, uh, the consideration of Courtney Peterson for a first term. These are all at-large appointments. Caitlin Tuthero for a second term, and Daniel Holmes for a second term. And for the Kataba Regional Workforce Investment Board, um, we requested a reconsideration of the appointment of Misty Burl for a second term, Stacy Moore for a second term, Annette Killian for a first term, and Mike Durelia for a second term.
Thank you. Any other committees that I might be missing? Any new council member, new non-agenda comments?
I have a couple.
Yes, sir.
Um, I was just made aware that, uh, Andy, um, wants us to put together a public works committee meeting, so we'll be reaching out to committee members on that, um, concerning the land, some things going on with the landfill. And also, um, if y'all remember last year, we had the, uh, employee outing at Winthrop for one of the basketball games. We had a, a good time. It was a, I think it was probably a double overtime thriller. Everybody had such a good time. I was wanting to kind of get that back on our radar to, um, see if we could kind of work that back into the fold this year, uh, as an employee appreciation. Um, as I mentioned last year, we used to do these annually, and we kind of got away from them. Um, I think this was a, a low-budget event that we were able to work very, um, penny-wise, uh, but it was such a good time. Everybody had such rave reviews. Karen and Lena did such a good job of getting the information out and did some follow-up with some employees, and I just think we need to kind of get that back on our radar. Um, basketball season just started, um, so I wanted to kind of put this in the atmosphere to see what, what council thought and get it in the hands of, um, Kevin and management to see if we can rework this back into the fold this year for the employees.
Thank you. Anyone else? I'm going to just.
Just want to wish our chairman a happy birthday week.
Thank you.
I noticed he looked a little older than.
Thank you. One year closer. I, I'm just gonna throw this in more as a commentary. I have had some contact by committee chairs who have expressed to me concerns that we are trying to attempt meetings and we're having a hard time getting people to attend. Um, the work we do in committees is, can be important work, but it can't be done if there's not a quorum. So I would ask that everyone please strive to, to make those meetings. Last but not least, citizens' concerns. Sonny McCrory to address counsel regarding the Encourage and Serve Club of America and the World. Yes, sir?
How are you all doing, Dave?
Good.
Glad to see the council here. I haven't seen you in a while, and, uh, I'm glad to be back. Uh, I talked about the elderly pretty much last time, uh, talk, but this is about encourage and serve the Club of America and the World, Inc. And, uh, what I'm talking about this time is about family and also about the Constitution. Uh, we have sort of let down the Constitution, we've let down our families. And, uh, this program I have is primarily designed to help the youth from age zero to seven. And the, uh, next group is from eight to, uh, the, uh, from eight to 12, and then the rest is in regard to, uh, the, uh, elderly and also, uh, the mental class. But most importantly, uh, what this program is about is about truth. Uh, too many of, uh, the people that come up today don't tell the truth. Too many of them are on drugs. Too many of them are dying. And I'm, I think it's important for us to make a major issue, to make certain that, uh, we are prepared to help the children and the elderly and, matter of fact, anybody in our, uh, that's an American, uh, that, uh, they have the ability to change activities, to create a more safe environment. Um, it's also about choices. Young people, uh, they sometimes don't make good choices, they make bad choices. And, uh, this particular program is designed to help people make good choices. Another thing it's designed for is to bring people together of all races. Uh, anybody that wants to improve America, that's what this program is about. Uh, it's also good tough love. It's also good tough love. You know, America has been known to be able to make strong choices, and we want to make sure that America is prepared. And myself, I'm 80 years of age, so I'm not necessarily the person that I'm talking about. I'm talking about those that are having real problems today. I recognize it because my children made some bad choices also. And I think it's very important that we've come on strong about changing America to different values. And we should, when we become involved in anything, we should try to figure the best and most appropriate way to judge and value whatever we're about to do. We don't talk too much about these things, and I don't think I've heard it too much anywhere really in years. It appears that drugs is okay. They say that something like 70, 80, 5% of the people have a problem with drugs and the prescription drugs. So it's a very important thing that I'm talking about. But I'm here for help, too. I've got to get a board before this year is out, and I'd like for it to be about 15. And I am looking for some help on it right now. In the past five years are approximately. My son died. He died just recently on the 12th of June, and he had some major problems with alcohol. That was his main problem that he had during his whole life. My daughter, she passed away five years ago approximately, and she died from drowning in a swimming pool. But now my son didn't die from the drugs. He died mainly because he was bit by a snake about three years ago. And they had to take his lower intestines and upper intestines. And he had some issues with alcohol, big issues. Matter of fact, like I said, it was the main issues was the alcohol. Encourage and serve is not meant to be like you think it is, even though this particular program is designed for, it's a nonprofit, and you can use it for a number of different directions. It could be involved in sports, it can be involved in character building, it can be involved in just about anything you can think of. But encourage and serve, the serve part of it means serve to action, do something about what needs to be done to solve problems and do them in a proper way. We need to be able to measure our direction with our children coming up. You know, children have been taught, you know, all of us have been around our children, and they say something wrong or bad or whatever, and you laugh at it. Well, that's not a good thing. We need to teach children when they come up that there are truths and there are wrongs. Truth, you can't ever change. It's same way, no matter who it is. And truths and actions to back that truth. And children, if they're brought up properly, should be brought up by their parents. We've sort of done away with the parents taking care of children. Actually, I propose, and I don't know that it would ever happen, but I propose that women and men should have to take care of their own children because that's where love comes involved in their lives. And loyalty is one of the most important things that anyone can have is for their children. But you know, the TV gets first place or the computer gets first place. And these things are running our country, even though they are doing a lot for our country as far as technology and such as that. And the actions we take right now in our country, like respect, look at our politicians talking the way they're talking in Washington. They don't have the respect for each other. They really don't. And they use language that shouldn't be used for adults or for anybody else. And I wanted to just point these things out. And of course, the elderly, they're their throwaways, and I had talked about that before. The elderly can do more than you think they can do, and you shouldn't sell them short and you shouldn't try to get rid of them. And some people are forgetting to get rid of them. They don't want to be even involved with them. But some elderly are active, they do things, and I know that there's a lot of good that's being done for elderly, don't get me wrong. But too many times, people just go home and don't do nothing, and that's about it. Nobody cares. Okay, that's pretty much what I wanted to talk about. But right now, the most important thing is for me to get the program started because during this five-year period, I've sort of, I've gotten angry, I've had some problems that I have been trying to take care of, and I don't have a son or a daughter now, so I don't have a family. But I am planning on, I want this program to get started, and I want to, most importantly, have a board that is mixed with all races, creeds and color. And I want it to primarily look at not race or anything like that. We need to do away with racism. We're a mixed country, right? We're supposed to be all together, though. We're not together. We need to come together. And, but what I really need is to get the board started, and I need some help in getting the best people I could possibly get. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there a motion to go into executive session?
Yes, sir. I move to go into executive session for receipt of legal advice on condemnation of Pennies Project 11149-004, Track 114. Receipt of legal advice on condemnation of Pennies Project 11149-010, Track 20. Receipt of legal advice on opioid litigation, contractual matter of Family Court and Moss Justice Center, and contractual matter of the TIF discussion.
Is there a second? Any discussion? Dr. Black?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like the record just to show, and Karen, that I'm opposed to the discussion of general construction issues not being discussed in open session for the sake of transparency to the taxpayer.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. We are in executive session. We have exited executive session, and now we have two items before we can adjourn. First item, counsel to consider adopting a resolution to opt out of the Nationwide Class Certified for Negotiation Purposes in N-RAY National Prescription Opiate Litigation, MDL 2804. Is there a motion? Oh, come on.
No motion.
No motion. Item number two, counsel to consider adopting a resolution to opt in the Nationwide Class Certified for Negotiation Purposes in N-RAY National Prescription Opiate Litigation, MDL 2804.
So moved.
Second.
There is a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Move to approve. Allison, second. Unanimous?
All opposed, hearing none, motion passes. Thank you to Ms. Cox for directing traffic. Are there any motions to be made as we exit executive session?
Yes, sir. Move to approve condemnation of Pennies Project 11149-004, Track 114.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, hearing none, motion passes.
One more. Move for approval of condemnation of Pennies Project 11149-010, Track 20.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, hearing none, motion passes. There's a motion to adjourn?
Yes, there is.
Second.
We are adjourned.